Yeah, I think the item is tabled, so if she would like to come back and present her public comment when it is agendized next, that would be the most appropriate. I don't think. We do have a moment for open testimony that is not related to an item, so if she would like to present her comments in that vein, that would be appropriate.
Tonight?
That would be appropriate.
Okay. If you could go ahead and come on up and give your testimony, and you're limited to three minutes, and if you could just state your name for the record, that'd be terrific.
Are you saying that I didn't pay attention to?
So the item that you came here to speak on was not being agendaed, huh?
Yeah, I know. It got tabled.
Yeah.
And now I'm speaking in open communication?
Awesome.
Yeah. Okay, so, good evening. My name is Carol Gomez, and I am speaking as a facilitator of the Healthy Escondido Coalition, a project that fell under the Healthy Cities, Healthy Residents Program. I am speaking today in support of the proposed general plan amendment, including the updates to the Community Protection Chapter and the addition of an Environmental Justice Section to the Community Health and Services Chapter. These changes are essential for Escondido's future. The safety element update directly responds to growing risks from wildfires and climate change. By strengthening policies around fire hazards, evacuation planning, and climate resilience, the city is making a smart proactive action in public safety and community preparedness. Equally important is the creation of the Environmental Justice Section. This addition not only fulfills state requirements but also reflects a deeper commitment to equity in ensuring that disadvantaged communities are recognized and prioritized. Addressing issues like pollution, food access, housing, and civic engagement in one unified section will make these goals more actionable and transparent. I commend the city for moving forward with these updates. They reflect thoughtful planning, legal compliance, and a clear commitment to the health, safety, and inclusion of all Escondido residents. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Now, moving on, since we're tabling this, we don't need to vote on it, so we'll go ahead and move on to current business, and that would be PL 24-0286, Urban Forestry Management Plan.
My name is Priscilla Roldan. I'm an Associate Planner at the city, and tonight I'm joined by our consultant, DUDAC, sitting next to me, to provide an informational presentation on the Urban Forestry Management Plan and Program. For the purpose of tonight's presentation is to bring awareness of this program and also to glean general feedback from you all, and there is no formal action required from you all tonight other than to receive this presentation and provide feedback. I am joined by Konami Otani from DUDAC, and I will let her briefly present, or present herself.
Good evening, folks. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Konami Otani. I'm an urban forest planner at DUDAC, and I'm an ICA certified arborist, tree risk assessment qualified, and I do urban forest planning, management plans, and master plans throughout California and across the nation. So, excited to be here today. Thank you for having me.
All righty. So we will kick off tonight's presentation with an overview of urban forestry management plans, including what they are and key terms to be aware of. Then I will provide some background about the project, including timeline, deliverables, and focus areas associated with the program. And thereafter, Konami will conclude the presentation with ongoing efforts and next steps.
So first, what is an urban forest management plan? So an urban forest management plan is an actionable long-term strategy to maintain tree canopy cover for future community members as they enjoy them today. So when we're looking at developing an urban forest management plan, we look at a few components. So we look at priorities of yourselves, elected officials, the perspectives of city staff. We look at urban tree resources. That includes public and private trees through canopy cover assessment, as well as assessment of the publicly managed trees through the tree inventory. We also look at management practices, work records, budgetary information on how the trees are being taken care of in the city. We look at planning documents that urban forestry can relate to or that the goal should align with to make sure that those are aligned, and we also look at policies and ordinances to see how trees are being guided through these avenues. And then we have a robust community engagement process where we ask the community what their priorities are, what their ideal future forest is going to be, and we take all of those things together and develop an action plan for you all. So first, the urban forest is the collection of trees found within the built environment, so that includes both trees growing on public property as well as in private properties, residential backyards, institutional land, commercial land, so inclusive of all those within that city boundary. The tree inventory is the specific data based on the trees that are managed by the city's Public Works Department. So each tree has a GPS location, a tree species, height, the diameter at standard height, which is a measurement of an estimated age, and all of these things also have work records attached to them to show history of how that specific tree has been cared for, and these are for all the trees in Escondido, on public land. And then canopy cover is the area of shade provided by leaves, branches, and stems that cover the ground when viewed aerially, and this includes both public and private trees. So we're looking at two different data sets that are looking at public trees in great detail and private trees as much as we can, and we discuss the urban forest together because the benefits of the urban forest, it doesn't matter if the trees are growing on public and private land, right? They are both providing benefits to the community, so we look at the urban forest all collectively. And just as a note, urban forests are planted by people, and they require continued care and maintenance to grow and mature, so any trees that are growing in the urban environment, somebody planted it there, so that also means that they require maintenance and care to make sure that it's safe for the folks in the city.
All righty. To provide some background, back in 2021, the city adopted the Climate Action Plan, in which among many things directed city staff to develop an urban forestry management plan. In the fall of 2024, City Council adopted Resolution 2024-127, which authorized the city to accept a grant from the urban forestry, I'm sorry, from the U.S. Department of Agriculture and the U.S. Forest Service. The grant allowed the city to move forward with this effort and begin the programming. In the winter of 2024, staff released a request for proposals, also known as an RFP, to select a capable consultant with the expertise to deliver on the program. And at the end of the calendar year, staff were ready to begin and embark on the program. However, at the beginning of 2025, the federal administration announced cuts to the Inflation Reduction Act, which was associated to the grant that was awarded to the city, and they also announced staff cuts to the U.S. Forest Service. Together, these cost delays to the grant and reduced the grant's timeline from the initial three years to six months. Despite unprecedented and unforeseen changes, staff decided to move forward with these efforts, and in the spring of 2025, City Council approved Resolution 2025-09, which allowed staff to proceed with the contract and kick off the project. So since, DUDAC and city staff have hit the ground running by gathering information and data and embarking on community engagement for the community. In late spring and now summer, DUDAC and staff began this engagement through activities like tabling and a survey, and in the fall this year, DUDAC and staff hoped to finalize the urban forestry management plan, a draft of the urban forestry management plan, and request for public comment on some of the conclusions and recommendations that come from the data that we collected. So the city's Climate Action Plan directs staff to develop the urban forestry management plan, but there are also other tree-related objectives that are included in this Climate Action Plan. Other objectives include planting approximately 5,500 trees by 2035, and the ambitious goal to have one tree per resident by 2088. Planting trees could improve community health, reduce impacts to heat waves, and through an increased tree canopy, a cooler environment, and a greener landscape. So the urban forestry management program can be broken down into two categories. There is the early tree care and planning component, and then there's a development of the actual urban forestry management plan. Early tree care entails the maintenance of Arbor Day plantings, so every year, the city embarks on plantings on Arbor Day and plants trees. The grant will impart, pay for some of the maintenance for these Arbor Day plantings, not only for this year but for previous years. And because we've shortened the timeline, we've allocated some of the funding that would have been spent along the three years to tree plantings and focused areas. So some of the funding for early tree care and tree planting will be for tree plantings themselves. Another component of the urban forestry management program is the Urban Forestry Management Plan, which includes collection of quantitative and qualitative data by taking a look into the city's tree inventory, canopy and programming. Konami kind of alluded to that earlier in the presentation. It also entails the collection of community feedback, so that way we can make sure that the data that we collect aligns with the values and priorities of the community. And from those two together will outcome the recommendations, which will include some suggested regulatory updates along with the Urban Forestry Management Plan, which will include recommendations. So here's a quick glance at the focus areas that are required, that we're required to examine as part of the grant. Residents in these areas have been identified to experience disproportionate amount of exposure to heat and pollution. Residents in these areas are also projected to experience a higher risk of flooding and health problems like asthma and diabetes. This is all information in accordance with the Council of Environmental Qualities Climate and Economic Justice Screening Tool. And while the Urban Forestry Management Plan, programming for plantings and the plantings that are occurring currently will focus on these areas, the analysis itself for the overall plan will focus on trees citywide.
So in looking at your canopy cover and your tree inventory, those are your tree resources, the city of Escondido currently has approximately an 18% canopy cover. That would be the combination of both public and private trees, so shade from both public and private trees is about 18%. The tree inventory, the one with the details for the publicly managed tree inventory, we have a pretty large quantity of queen palms and coast live oaks. In municipal urban forests, there are sustainability metrics that are industry standards, and 5% of one species is considered to be a very rizling and protective standard, and both queen palm and coast live oak are above that metric. There will be more further discussion in the UFMP about this biodiversity metric. For example, the coast live oak is a native oak tree. It has very big biodiversity benefits, so we want to make sure that we're considering all of these items when we're thinking about trees. And the current inventory consists of about 60% of the tree species in the inventory are considered high water use species. So as we're planning for the future, if you look at the UFMP approach box, we would be providing an updated recommended species list, so that will consider the current species that are allowable in the city, what water use, so very low or low water use species. We'll look at these diversity metrics, so we'll probably recommend maybe avoiding planting some queen palms there just to match that diversity. And then some species will be included that are considered climate-ready species, so these are species that are being evaluated in higher temperature areas that California is predicted to be in the future, and looking at the trees that are doing well and planting those types of species there. So all of these, the recommended species list and adding these climate-ready species and planting the right tree in the right place would all enhance your canopy cover for the city. And the important thing about the right tree, right place concept is that the larger stature tree, the more environmental benefits that it will provide than a smaller stature tree. So for example, beautiful crepe myrtles, but they do provide less shade than a big oak tree. So planting a larger species in an appropriate space would provide more benefits for the community, and as a tree grows, the benefits increase. So the environmental benefits of a young tree are actually much less, and then as it grows, the environmental benefits increase. So when looking at the tree inventory, Escondido's tree inventory has a lower rate of mature trees than the sustainability metric. So the sustainability metric is for safe and healthy municipal urban forests and being able to preserve these urban forestry benefits over time. So when looking at it, the city has a little bit of a lower rate of immature trees, but a lot of young trees, so it looks like a big planting effort was done recently. But the middle-aged and mature trees have a pretty small percentage. These trees, again, provide the greater amount of benefits, and by protecting these trees over time, you'll be able to have trees that are large, that are providing these benefits, but also being replaced with the young trees that are being planted. Trees need time to mature to provide these enhanced benefits, and sustaining the urban forest over time would necessitate an update to the ordinance to protect mature trees. So this is potentially an opportunity to protect trees on private property, so different thoughts there. There are a few ways to do it, but there are larger spaces to plant larger trees on private property typically than, let's say, a right-of-way on a street. So this is a consideration for how you can protect more mature trees in your city. So for community engagement, so we pulled preliminary survey results, so these are just the beginning, but we did have 156 responses so far, and shade and cooling are the most valued urban forestry benefits for community members. 70% of participants want more shade trees in their neighborhood, so it sounds like there's a lot of support for wanting shade trees in the neighborhoods. And 35% of residents are willing to plant trees if there was financial assistance, so many folks have concerns about either planting trees or maintenance moving forward, so they just want, they would be open to it if there was a little bit of help there. Some preliminary feedback from the tabling events. When we visited with folks, we heard about the more trees along the downtown area, so folks are missing those big trees there. Community members are interested in supporting urban forestry efforts, so that could mean attending an educational workshop, it could be volunteering to plant a tree, it could be advocacy, so that would go, that's besides the private property ownership. And community members, a lot of times when we spoke to them, they were saying, "Well, what tree would be best for Escondido?" So it sounds like the recommended tree species and tree care resources for private residents would be very helpful. And Escondido's residents love fruit trees, so there's a request for fruit trees as part of the program.
So as part of community engagement, and another way that we're engaging with the community is through the Free Street Tree Program. So this program is not new. However, we're leveraging to let homeowners know that there is an opportunity that they could receive a free tree within the right-of-way along their home. And so, as I mentioned before, as part of the early tree care, we've reallocated some of the funding to plant trees. And so as part of the project's planning efforts, DUDAC staff have identified areas along the residential right-of-way that could benefit from trees. So staff are putting door hangers along homeowners' doors, and with the idea that they would read this, scan the QR code, and see if they want to adopt a tree. They would reach out to the city, and the city will take ownership, plant a tree, they will, of course, assess for the space and adequate tree species, and agree with the resident. So the resident would have to commit to watering the tree for three years during this dry season in order for the tree to establish and survive, and in return, the city would maintain the tree. The homeowner will benefit from the shade from the tree, potential reduced energy savings or energy savings from having that shaded tree, and of course, the greenery, and at the same time, the city will be able to move the Climate Action Planning Goals forward.
So a few considerations for the urban forestry program. So one avenue to protect more mature trees is through this private protection ordinance. However, another method would be to guide developers to protect more trees and replace/remove trees, so that can be done through modifications to the zoning code for institutional and commercial properties, for constructions, parking lot redevelopments, and guiding folks to preserve any trees, maybe change designs, or to then replace the trees that were removed from that property, but those are two different ways to do it. An easy one will be to align some of the developer parameters with the International Society of Arboriculture Best Management Practices for Tree Protection During Construction. So those are guidelines that protect the tree and ensure that the root structure is not compromised, so the tree will survive after the construction process. So aligning some of the operational processes to these best management practices can also help this process. If a private tree protection ordinance regulating on private tree, private property is not of appetite, perhaps there is opportunity where there is a memorial or heritage tree protection program. So if there is a property owner who's interested in opting in to protect that tree and get a city recognition, then that tree would be protected, and it would also be part of this roster of a heritage or memorial tree program. A consideration here would be what happens when ownership changes. So let's say the first resident loves this tree, recognizes this tree as a heritage tree, but then they move. So do we want to protect that tree through that, or would that then restart that process there? And through the ordinance, you can protect specific species, so we can protect native trees, and we can protect mature trees based on size, so it depends on where we want to go from there. And our next steps. So our community survey closes July 18th, so we really appreciate it if you could spread that among your networks. And we will be having upcoming tabling events, Cruising Grand on Friday, Firework Show on July 4th, Farmer's Market on July 15th, and then National Night Out, where we'll have the public comment, and we'll gain some feedback from the community on the key findings and recommendations of the plan. We, this week, will also be hosting focus groups. So one business focus group on Thursday, where we'll talk about how trees can affect consumer behavior and gauge the perspective of businesses on their urban trees in their area, challenges, opportunities, and then we'll discuss with neighborhood community groups as well to see if there is interest in private tree ownership, what are the barriers and challenges there, what kind of resources do folks need, so lots of engagement. And then the Free Street Tree Program, so contacting the city before July 31st and to enter into that program.
That concludes staff presentation, and we're here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Excellent presentation, very informative, much appreciated, and especially because now your timeframe got cut considerably, so now you really got to hustle, but good job, thank you. Questions of staff? Commissioner Stevie.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation this evening. I have a question, it's a process question about Grand Avenue. So recently, as a part of the Vision Project, we did just plant a series of trees along Grand Avenue. And I'm not an expert in this area, but you both seem to know quite a bit about it. What I have been told is that the planter boxes and the spaces designated for those trees are about 2X the size of the trees that were actually planted. Additionally, I've been told that the trees that were planted are low shade trees, and they seem to be very immature. They're brand-new trees, essentially. But it does appear, according to what I've heard, that the city, by whoever planted these trees, whoever was responsible for these trees, the city essentially paid twice as much as they should have for those trees. And so my question to you both is twofold. First, what is the process by which trees in projects like that are ultimately determined and finalized? You know, specifically, if we did allocate a certain budget, and if we did allocate a certain amount of physical space to trees, right? But the tree that goes in, in its final form, does not seem to make full utilization of what's been allocated. How does that happen? And then the second question I have is, what would the commission's role be in potentially ensuring future projects have maybe a more mature tree that's planted, one that has larger shade canopy going in right-of-way? Because, you know, right now, as it stands, those trees probably won't cast meaningful shade in the next decade, right? And Grand Avenue is supposed to be a heavily pedestrian area, you want to have a strong shade canopy. So those are my two questions for you.
Thank you so much for your question, Commissioner Stevie, and I appreciate you bringing that up. I am not privy, specific to the project for Grand Avenue, as I'm not in the engineering department, but I'm happy to answer the question to the best of my ability. I've taken note about the planter boxes, so I will definitely make sure to convey that to the department or the project manager, and then get back to you with additional answers. Now, in regards to your first question, which speaks to how do we appropriately size the infrastructure so it ultimately meets the needs for the tree that we're planting in the area, if I got that correctly? I think it's like in a project-by-project basis. Each project takes different forms, so it is a matter of how our departments work together. Engineering works with planning, as well as planning works with engineering and building, so that would be contingent on that. In terms of how to protect tree species in the future, I think right now is the best opportunity, really, to provide insight through what can we incorporate in our ordinance to make sure that in the future, we are setting ourselves up for success and not removing trees too early, providing adequate maintenance, and making sure that we're proactively planting in the right tree, the right place. I see that Konami also wants to unmute, so I'll let you add anything, and then our city planner can add or city engineer after, I guess.
Thank you. So I just want to mention that research shows that planting a small, like a young tree that is a 15-gallon size as opposed to a 24-inch box doesn't necessarily mean that the tree is going to thrive better. So sometimes the root structure of a larger boxed tree is girdled, which makes it so the root system can't establish properly. So planting smaller trees at the onset, I understand it doesn't have a lot of shade at the onset, but it does perhaps provide for a healthier tree. I do want to mention that the whole arborists are newly invited to the planning table, so we, this is very common. So it's very common for arborists to not review tree species before they go into developments. These are the things that we're trying to address now through these processes. So it's very common among cities, that's why we're dealing with the infrastructure issues of trees planted 50 years ago. So I think this is a great opportunity to change that now.
And I'm happy to speak to the second question, which was, how do we assure moving forward future projects find the best tree given the space? And so typically, in capital improvement projects, which is what Grand Avenue is, it's a city-led project, planning would have been brought in, this project predates me, so I'm going to speak high level. Planning would have been brought in to review as part of the landscape plan check, the proposed landscaping areas to make sure it complies, but the Urban Forestry Management Plan is an opportunity to establish further regulation or policies to try and improve upon that. So as part of the UFMP's development, there could be language within there that encourages or directs a certain sizing of tree, spacing of tree, tree canopy coverage at maturity, so there, this is the opportunity to provide input to our staff on what you would potentially want to see in the UFMP to ensure something like that is addressed.
So when you say this is the opportunity, you mean right now as we're talking to give some straight feedback to you, or is there going to be a future date in which we're being asked to do this?
I think that right now is the time for direct feedback. The plan hasn't been drafted yet, they're in the midst of it. It doesn't have to literally be at this meeting, but you could follow up via email, you could set up a time to meet with the project management team that's below to express your opinions or feedback, or you could provide it right now.
Okay, so then I'll circle back to you two. With respect to, sorry, I just discovered that the cable for this mic is directly where my foot goes, so I apologize. With respect to ongoing development projects in the city, and especially areas where the general plan and the specific plans anticipate high pedestrian usage, I would personally love to see us kind of skip ahead in years and plant trees that are, in your classification, I believe, are mature, or, you know, something that's at least young and not immature, which we, you know, we have that kind of big middle grouping of young trees, but things that have a strong shade canopy right out the gate. And I recognize that that would drive the cost of planting those trees up, because, right, the more mature tree, the more expensive it is. However, it seems to me that the economic benefits could potentially far outweigh those costs. If Grand Avenue, for example, in my view personally, had planted shade trees right out the gate, it would make it more appealing to especially families with kids that might be lingering down there, but just anybody that might want to linger on Grand Avenue during hot summer days to stay a little bit longer if they have places to go where there's shade. It would also elevate the visual profile of It would also elevate the visual profile of that part of town, right? Right now, especially, just looking down Grand, you have those beautiful lights, which are nice, the string lights, but there's almost nothing else to see. We used to have some pretty mature trees down there, and now they're just all gone. And you see these buildings, uh, which unfortunately, many of them are vacant, right? And so it's not especially visually appealing, and now we've degraded the visual appeal, in my estimation, by planting these stick trees that don't have any aesthetic value to them at present. So, uh, you know, I looked at the map that you showed of your areas of focus, again, inasmuch as there's sort of a high pedestrian vision for the area, I would encourage you to build into your plan something that envisions more mature trees on the outset.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jester.
Sorry. Thank you for your. Is this on? Hello? Yeah. Thank you for your presentation. Um, I had a, I had a couple of questions. I'm leaning more on the practical side of trees. I love trees. But they cause a lot of damage. The tree roots in, especially in a very high congested area where there's a lot of underground utilities and stuff like that, becomes a real problem. What consideration, uh, would you have for addressing the below-ground issues for the roots and stuff like that?
So for, um, before you ground break to plant a tree, um, the person who is breaking the ground has to call Dick Lort, 311. So the, the utilities will come out and mark the, um, utility locations there to ensure that we're, that, uh, the tree doesn't get planted there, if there are utility locations.
Yeah, that, that wasn't my question. My, 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 my question was ongoing issues, as the roots spread out and with the different species becoming really kind of, I mean, going into everything, especially older, you know, water systems, sewer systems, gas line systems, you name it, electrical systems.
So, um, as part of the recommended species list, there will be, um, a parameter there that is a, the, I can't remember the exact terminology, but it's the level of infrastructure conflict, like the root aggressive sys, the aggressiveness of the root system. So we will be recommending trees that have, um, perhaps larger root systems in areas that are like medians, perhaps, you know, areas that won't need, um, that won't have infrastructure of the sidewalks and et cetera. So that's more of the right tree, right place concept. So we wouldn't want to be planting, um, trees with aggressive root systems in the urban areas. So it, the recommended species list will have some of those considerations, unfortunately, for, um, if a tree is thirsty and if there is water in a pipe somewhere, the tree will find it. So that is, it's less of, it's less of the root breaking a pipe, it's more of the pipe is leaking and the root found that water.
Okay. What, two of the species that you discussed were queen palms, which are particularly, uh, capable of lifting concrete and causing all kinds of problems. It's all over the city, everywhere. Uh, and the other were the oaks. Both of those trees, especially the queen palms, require a lot of maintenance. They seed every year, and it's expensive to have them cut. How will you address that, or will you just not use queen palms? I don't know. I mean, I don't think it was, I don't think you had made a decision yet, but I mean...
Well, generally speaking, um, palms do not provide, uh, the quantity of benefits that shade trees do, or the shade capacity, and they do require, um, maintenance, um, at a more frequent basis, which then also makes, um, more greenhouse gases and contributes to pollutants. So typically, um, we recommend against, uh, against planting, uh, high quantity of palms, unless there's a very big community push for it, or there's other priorities. But, um, there, there will be discussion in the UFMP of, uh, the differences between planting shade trees and their benefits and, uh, and costs as well, in comparison to palms.
Okay. Uh, has any consideration been given to the above-ground effect, such as, we've spent a lot of money putting solar on everybody's house? How has that ever come up in any of your community forums, or anybody express any concern about that?
Not yet.
While it's nice to have shade, it's also nice to have the benefit of solar, you know, electricity from solar.
So specifically for your city, that hasn't been brought up just yet, but it is a very common item in a tree ordinance. So sometimes the ordinance will state, if a tree was there first, then the tree is protected. If the solar panels were there first, then the solar panels take priority. So there are different ways to approach that, depending on how we want to approach it.
One option for the root issue would be to put in a deep root watering system to direct the roots down deep into the ground beyond, uh, the level of the utilities and stuff like that, just as a suggestion. Um, go ahead.
So, um, the deep rooting concept, um, if you think about it in a surface area, uh, if a tree is deep rooted and vertical, then perhaps it's more vulnerable to failure. Um, if a tree has roots that are spread across at a larger surface area, then it would be less vulnerable to that type of failure. So those are some considerations. Perhaps there's, um, maybe root barriers, that if there's an infrastructure conflict this way, maybe you can put a root barrier on one side and direct the roots to the other side. Um, with, if we were to do that, then we would want to provide, uh, installation specifications and such as well, to just make sure that it wouldn't be, oh, three sides of the tree have root barriers and just, it's just one side that has a root barrier.
Okay, thank you. Um, that, that all makes perfect sense. And one other, one last question I had. How will, how will, what, what consideration has there been to any diseases going around? I mean, a few years back, I had to remove two extremely, three extremely large pine trees, because there was a beetle. Um, how, how will you, will that be in the plan, I guess, how that's going to be managed? I mean, with regard to potential removal of, you know, trees that were put in and the effect of maybe, uh, bugs and stuff like that?
So as part of the sustainability analysis and, um, a separate, uh, software-based analysis, there will be considerations for, um, which pests, or which trees are vulnerable to current pests, and those will be noted in the recommended species list. Um, one thing. The, in terms of addressing, uh, plant healthcare and trees that are, um, being impacted by pests or pathogens, the city currently operates on, um, a reactive basis due to budgeting and resources. So the, um, the team is able to respond to tree requests as they come in. So unfortunately, there isn't, um, enough resources right now to be able to do kind of a proactive process. But the way that we can be protective is to, um, is to consider the biodiversity, uh, metrics when planting different species and, um, avoiding species that have, uh, known pests.
Okay. And did you guys, did you say something about an ordinance to protect trees? And that is on private property?
So tree protection ordinances, um, I think the, uh, it's changing a little, but bef, in, um, cities, mostly in Los Angeles, Northern California, there are tree protection parameters on private land. So the, this would essentially require a homeowner, if they wanted to remove a tree of a certain size, they would have to file a permit with the city, and then they would either, um, replace the tree, or maybe, maybe it's protected, so it can't get removed, but that, those items could come to a commission or a council, et cetera.
To clarify just a little bit more, the city of Escondido does have a tree preservation ordinance, um, that does apply to private property currently. It's a bit of a very, it's a more pointed ordinance, but it does currently, um, affect private and public property. So I think the Urban Forestry Management Plan has the opportunity to potentially investigate whether to expand that or refine it in certain ways, and that's part of what the feedback would be this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Commissioner Crowell, Commissioner Guffsonson.
Thank you so much. I have a couple of questions, mostly for my, just clarification. What I haven't heard from the presentation is, what do we currently do as a city? What, your presentation was, was nice, I mean, uh, as one of my colleagues said, I love trees. I mean, who doesn't love trees? But what, what is the city's current, uh, action plan? Uh, how it deals with planting more trees, cleaning up trees, uh, cleaning up brush? What are we currently doing, and what is the plan that you're proposing or gaining feedback for that's going to improve it?
So the current process for, um, the department is, uh, reactive, so it would be upon request. So upon residents calling in to request service on a tree, and that would be due to the budgetary and resources constraints.
Right. So we have residents calling in the city to clean up problems. So the local citizens of Escondido are identifying problems and communicating that to the city, which I think is, you know, the, the root of good governance, right, of the citizenry of, uh, Escondido. What are you guys going to add to that?
So as part of the Urban Forestry Management Plan, DUDAC is also looking into some of the programming, what, and the budget around, um, public works, maintenance for our trees. So that will be part of the analysis, right? Looking at how we are budgeting to maintain trees and how we can be more proactive.
So you haven't done the analysis of what we're currently doing and how that's going?
So it's ongoing, we're collecting feedback. Uh, DUDAC has conducted interviews with multiple departments to get an idea of how it is that the city functions, maintains trees, plants, maintenance and removal of trees. So getting that background information is really essential. They move forward with more quantitative analysis to look at the inventory, and, um, I think right now, we're just at the information gathering stage.
That process hasn't begun, or it's ongoing, it's not completed?
Ongoing.
So if I were to ask, my, my genesis of my question is, what the city's doing now, and you don't really know, you're still, it's an ongoing process?
So I'll go ahead and jump in here. The city currently doesn't have a comprehensive plan-
Right.
-for tree health, tree growth, the urban forests. So there is no comprehensive guiding document directing the city on how to maintain, increase, or even care for their urban forests. It is done on a case-by-case basis, uh, reactive basis by our Public Works Department. So this plan, this process would establish a comprehensive plan for our urban forests for now and into the future. It would set goals, um, in alignment with the Climate Action Plan to identify how we achieve those metrics of X number of trees by 2030, X number of trees by 2050, with the ultimate goal of one tree per resident by 2088, which is a very aggressive goal. Um, it would identify policy language on how we would prioritize or achieve those goals. So things like encourage, um, future plantings to occur within X, or, uh, you know, incentivize the planting of trees with X canopy coverage. I'm, I'm spitballing here a little bit, right? Um, it may also direct the establishment of future regulations. So it may say to consider or to explore development of an ordinance to ma, to mandate a certain amount of canopy coverage in private development projects or public development projects. So it would really be creating a framework for the city to launch pad off of, and that's what this current effort is. And they're in the exploratory phase of gathering data, both quantitative through the inventories, but also qualitative through the outreach and engagement process.
Again, I'll go back to my original question, and I appreciate that. But what we're talking about here is, as you just said and I heard in the presentation, we're trying to create more regulation, more of a plan. Um, but we don't know, I don't, I'd love to, if you could tell me, I'd very much appreciate it. We have, basically, you're saying we have a policy of, uh, fix it as we go along, of our trees, of planting trees. There's absolutely no rhyme or reason of how the city currently operates.
So we do have ordinances in place-
Right.
-and, um, I can maybe allude to art, uh, Chapter 33, Article 55, which touches on grading. There are some regulations in place that touch on how, the distance between, um, trees and how a developer should plant trees. It touches on, um, preservation of trees, like Veronica spoke about earlier. So we do have, um, elements, they're just not a concerted effort. Um, we have a center-city landscape plan, which speaks to how the landscape should look like around center-city. Um, so the idea is to kind of bring those together and figure out how we can better maintain trees, plant trees, remove them.
Right. So therefore, so the answer to this now is that we believe that, as a planning commissioner, as a city, you know, we've got to make recommendations to the city council, that from this report, that we are going to be able to put together a basically central plan for, uh, urban forestry development. And so this is going to be a approach from your feedback from 158 citizens and ongoing processes, uh, talking to citizens, that the city will then, the basic plan here is, is that you're going to gather a bunch of information, put together a plan, and then the city's going to, uh, take care of basically the entire, um, um, growth of trees, of, of, of making sure there's a proper amount of ca, canopy cup, uh, cover. We're going to bring in the government now, the planning commission here, and the city council, and the city of Escondido, is going to actively manage through this consultant-generated plan, how to manage every single tree in Escondido on public land. That's the goal?
So I'll go ahead and jump in again. Uh, and then I will let our assistant city engineer jump in, he's been trying to jump in. Um, so the goal of the plan isn't going to speak specifically to each and every individual tree within the city, I want to clarify that. It is going to be broad overarching, and it's going to be through a mixture of direction that is both public and private, uh, enterprise. So in some instances, the city will be responsible for the literal maintenance and maturity and growth of trees, those in the public right-of-way, those on city-owned properties. But then through a, uh, lens of incentivization, or regulation, or both, it will look to potentially private property trees. So that's all still in the formation, or formulation stage, but ultimately, it will not speak to every single identified tree within the city and how, who and how that will be maintained at every granular individual tree.
The only thing I was going to add is that, you know, just over the years that I've been with the city, um, you know, I've seen a lot of policies, uh, and, and also in our design standards, uh, from an engineering standpoint, you know, as far as, uh, street trees and trees in the public right-of-way. And so there, there has been policy. And so I, I see this document, um, this management plan, um, probably gathering, um, some policies that we already employ. Um, policies like, uh, you know, in the, in the seventies or sixties and seventies, you would see a lot of non-contiguous sidewalk, and you had trees planted in that gap between the curb and the sidewalk. And, you know, hence, you had a lot of, of root issues with that. And so, you know, for the last 25, 30 years, you know, we've pretty much gone to contiguous sidewalk, and the street trees now are planted, um, you know, just behind the right-of-way, and so that the, the adjacent property owner in new developments is typically responsible for that, that street tree. And we're also, you know, a lot of our, uh, developments now, um, particularly the perimeter landscaping is HOA-maintained, um, and/or, uh, Ellen, you know, Landscape Maintenance District maintains. And so that, you know, there is this partnership being developed where, um, and I would just envision that this management plan probably both memorializes a lot of these policies and probably refines them and, and gives them maybe some more, uh, guidance. But I just, being able to speak to what we've done, probably in the last 30, 35 years, um, you know, just because our budgets and taking care of all these trees have been taxed, uh, a lot. And so, um, I think this is a good document to, to, uh, kind of provide, uh, guidance and, uh, lit, kind of legitimize the policies that we, we have already, so.
Okay, I don't want to belabor the point. Now, I appreciate the feedback, I appreciate all that information. So this is my suggestion part of this, which is sometimes less is more. And it seems to me that this entire project so far, this creation of our urban plan, is to make sure the government can do more, to make sure that we have more regulation, more planning. And that's not necessarily always a good thing. Sometimes it can be good, sometimes it can be bad. But this seems to be, from everything I've heard, and again, I know it's not complete yet, so I'm interested to see what this ultimately comes up with because it's funded and such. But I think sometimes you should sit back, not you in particular, but in general, is maybe we're doing something right now. Maybe it's better to have less government involvement, have, you know, the certain amount of arborists that are out there, having the community specifically say this is what we see that's going wrong, because the people who know what's going on best are the folks who are living here. And look, I have lots of neighbors who will absolutely cough if they see something wrong and we're driving down the street. So I don't know if that's necessarily a bad thing. I'm not saying that it can't be improved, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't have more trees. But what I'm saying here, it seems as though you guys, this plan is already decided there has to be action, there has to be more. And the only way we can do more is through more government regulation. And to me, that is not necessarily a good starting point. So that's just my feedback. I could be completely wrong on this, but that's the one thing that I did not hear in the presentation. My second question, and this is just, I didn't hear anything about fire. I didn't hear anything about brush. We talked a little bit about, you know, dying trees and such, but I, as a person who's lived in Escondido my entire life, I've seen major fires here, we see it all around the county. What has your study, have you looked into preventing fire, making sure that we are prepared, and making sure that, you know, another wildfire doesn't happen here in Escondido that could have been prevented?
So we will be engaging the fire department as well to make sure that their concerns are reflected in the plan. We've been doing a lot of tasks recently, so that is on the agenda, so it will be coming up. And also, we do want to talk, we do talk about right tree, right place, so that also includes a consideration to the wildland urban interface. Trees that have more flammable properties, for example, shouldn't be planted in those areas, but perhaps they're more appropriate in the urban core. So those types of things will be discussed in the plan as well. A lot of times, fire risk also comes from a lack of maintenance or a lack of water for those trees, so those types of items can be in there as well. We do have a section that will be discussing fire risk in the plan.
So that's not complete yet? That's ongoing?
Correct.
All right, thank you. I don't have any more questions for the moment. I think I used them all for the session.
Commissioner Jester, you had another question?
I did have a question. I got a little confused because I thought I heard you say that every tree in the city of Escondido would have a GPS coordinate, would be species identified, but Veronica said it was broad. What is it? Is it specific or is it broad?
So the tree inventory, the publicly managed trees, already has that data.
Oh, okay.
But the plan itself would be the management of the population of trees.
Including the private trees?
So the private trees would...
The newly planted private trees under the program, right? Or all of them?
The free street tree program would be public trees.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure if I'm understanding your question there.
Well, there's going to be some trees on some private property, right?
So...
They would be included in that? I was just curious, I was...
So for private property, we don't have the opportunity to gain as much information as we do for the publicly managed trees?
Right, I heard you say that, yes.
Okay, sorry, I'm not sure if I...
I just thought it was a complete picture, but anyway, I'm straightened out.
Okay.
One more question. Is, of the grant, the $665,000, is, what is the rough ballpark percentage of that amount of money left over after the consultant to plant, implement the program? 50%? 75%? 60%?
So I'm going to jump, I'm going to jump in here because we have six months to do this entire program, which originally started as a five-year grant timeline, then was distilled down to a three-year timeline, and now is a six-month timeline. So roughly a third of that is for the planting and maintenance and care of what we can feasibly get done over six months. So that's in conjunction with our public works department, how much they're currently expending on maintenance of public city trees in addition to the plantings for Arbor Day between the six-month, the six-month period.
Is that amount going to be sufficient, do you think? Or, I guess we don't know yet, right?
It's based on Public Works's numbers that they gave us that they needed and from the grant value, so I'm going to defer to the director of Public Works and say yes.
And our objective is just to expend the money within the period, because if not, we forego whatever we don't spend.
Right, I get it.
So we really are just looking to see how many trees we can plant within the period, and I think that ultimately depends on the contractor that we have, and the Public Works has, I should say, and whether they can deliver that. Because there's also logistics associated with them. We've been working with this with West Coast Arborist, who's our consultant. They have to procure the trees, make sure that the nurseries have them, making sure that the planting sites that DUDAC is surveying are the right and appropriate size, making sure that the species are right, and also that we are properly watering them, because we are planting in the middle of summer, which is not the best time to plant, but we're doing it just to make sure that we are expending the funds and leveraging the resources that have been given to us within the short timeframe.
Oh, no, I totally agree. We're, they're giving us the money, let's spend it. The reason that I ask is because I'm a real estate developer. On a 40-acre parcel, we planted 780 trees, okay? And I think that was, our budget was at least $450,000. So $200,000 for the citywide, and like you said, depending on the contractor. Wow. How many trees can we get planted? Just curious. Little trees. Yeah, we might have to reduce them to the small trees.
Which 16-gallon trees is for our benefit, because it does, they're more malleable to be established as well.
No, I agree, the smaller trees are better. I know that Commissioner Steve, you know, he likes the aesthetics of it, but certainly the smaller trees work out better.
Did West Coast provide the trees for Grand Avenue?
I am not privy to those details, I'm sorry. I can follow up later, if that works.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And just on that previous question, so a third of the budget is going to planting the trees? Just to clarify that.
About that amount.
Okay.
That is the rough estimate, as Priscilla noted. We're kind of building the plane as we're flying it, so if at the end of this process, some allocation has shifted more to planting because we were able to plant more, that's an, there's an opportunity for that.
Is there anything Planning Commission can do to help facilitate a more rapid planting of trees or anything else at this point?
I think encouraging anyone you know within the city to take advantage of the free tree program would be fantastic if you have networks that you can distribute that information out to. You know, if someone at this point in time leverages that program to plant a tree in the parkway, we're paying for it out of this grant. So that's a way to ensure more plantings. Right now, they're canvassing neighborhoods to get people to do that, but you are prominent figures in this community, so if you're able to share that, that would be wonderful.
Any other questions of staff? I've got just a couple, and I want to preface this with, I understand you're under a very, very short timeframe to cover a lot of things, and especially looking at all of the policies and ordinances that are in place right now. And it almost seems to me that what I would like to see is that this is a document that you can go to that identifies all of the policies that we want to have implemented from all the various sources. You know, there's general plan, specific plan, there's, and then there's overlapping in different policies. To try and get this into one document and not reference each and every specific line item of an ordinance, but at least a place where somebody goes, okay, you know, here's the ordinance, and you locate it, you can click on the link and go right there to get the real details. That's what I would kind of like to see. But I'm kind of looking at this more on a larger scale, that this almost seems like a document that would be used by the development community, but also for the city as well, to make sure that we're all on the same page, providing the same type of trees, so that we don't create problems like Commissioner Jester had indicated. So it's kind of jointly, it's both for the development world, but also for the city itself. So we have some sort of consistency and the ability to get out there and maintain the trees in an appropriate way and plant appropriate trees. I don't really have any more questions, I just wanted to make that comment. I think my fellow commissioners presented some really good comments, requests, and then questions as well for you to take under consideration here as you move forward. Again, doing this in a short period of time because there's a lot to be considered, and I wish you the best of luck on this. Any other comments from my fellow commissioners? Okay, with that, thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to item number four, PL 23-0381, which is the Pre-approved Accessory Dwelling Unit Program Information Session. Ms. Walden, you're up again.
Hello again and good evening. My name's Priscilla Walden, Associate Planner, and I'm here to provide the next presentation on the item, which focuses on Escondido's Pre-approved ADU Program. So almost exactly a year ago, I was here with our consultant at the time, RRM, and we introduced this effort to you all. Tonight, I will provide an update to the Pre-approved ADU Program post-project completion. This item is also informational only, and there's no decision required from you all tonight. All right, so tonight's presentation will begin with a quick overview of accessory dwelling units or ADUs, a refresher on pre-approved ADUs and state directives associated with pre-approved ADUs, along with some background information on the beginnings of Escondido's Pre-approved ADU Program. I'll then provide a breakdown of the Pre-approved ADU Program itself, along with some additional information of implementation of the program. So accessory dwelling units or ADUs are residential units that can be built on a single-family or multifamily lot. ADUs typically range from a couple square feet to up to 1,200 square feet and can be built as standalone structures. They can be built attached to the primary residence. They can also be a conversion of non-havitable space within an existing structure or within the primary residence. To build an ADU, an applicant would typically hire an architect or a contractor to develop ADU plans specific to their property. The applicant will then submit the plans, along with other required information and materials, to the city, and then the city will then verify against California Building Code and local ordinances and standards. Pre-approved ADUs, on the other hand, aim to accelerate the ADU permitting process by providing a standardized set of plans that are pre-vetted by the city to meet the California Residential Code along with local standards. And the idea is that having sets that are pre-vetted and pre-approved by the city will be conducive to faster review times. On October 11, 2023, the State of California approved Assembly Bill 1332, or AB 1332, which requires cities and counties to develop pre-approved ADU plans and have them posted on their website by January 1, 2025. AB 1332 also requires cities to approve or deny pre-approved ADU applications within a 30-day timeframe, which is shorter than regular ADUs, which is typically 60 days. In 2020, the Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, awarded the city of Escondido leap ground funding, which, among other efforts, helped, well, allowed us or gave us funding to develop the Pre-approved ADU Program. So in accordance with Program 2.1 of the housing element, the city began to embark on this effort in 2024. At its core, the Escondido, the Escondido's Pre-approved ADU Program seeks to streamline ADU permitting processing, provide additional housing options for low or moderate income households, along with offering a secondary income source for Escondido homeowners. The city contracted with RRM, which is an architecture consulting firm, to help develop the set of four ADU plans, along with a combination of publication materials, which are available on the city's website. And the publication materials are meant to help homeowners, contractors, and applicants navigate the Pre-approved ADU Program. So on your screen, you see the four plans that were developed as part of the program. These plan sets apply to new standalone and ADUs only. So these plans cannot be used for attached ADUs, they cannot be used for conversion of space. And pre-approved ADU plans range, oh, the ones for Escondido, range from a studio to a three-bedroom apartment. Each plan offers the flexibility to make minor cosmetic modifications to the ADU structure, so an applicant can potentially make exterior modifications, like changing lap siding to stucco or manseary. They can also change the roofing from like S tile to shingle. They can also make minor modifications to the interior of the ADU by maybe removing a wall, adding a wall, they can change a window to a door, and they can probably extend the counter space, remove a closet, depending on their preferences. So to complement the ADU plans, staff work with RRM to develop complementary educational materials. Our graphics department actually helped with this as well, and the purpose is really to help guide the applicant through the Pre-approved ADU Program and the processes. The educational materials range from short two-page documents to a lengthy guidebook, which is a 27-page guidebook that goes over what are ADUs, what the Pre-approved ADU Program is, how to get started, the permitting process, and some considerations during and post-construction. One document worth noting is that as part of the Pre-approved ADU Program, there's also an old Escondido Neighborhood Adaptation Guide, and this touches on recommendation, architectural recommendations, so that way, if somebody's building an ADU within the old Escondido district or near a historic resource, that the ADU matches the spirit of the, of the primary unit. So where are we now? The city launched the Pre-approved ADU Program in January of this year, and since, we received a total of eight applications. These eight applications are still under review, and as part of the program's next step, staff are continuing to finalize the translation of some outreach materials from English to Spanish. They are developing a complementary garage conversion checklist that will complement this program, and will continue to monitor and collect data, so that way we can see how effective this program is as we go. So that concludes staff's short presentation, and we're here for any questions.
Questions of staff? I've got just one minor question. If you can go back to the slide that has the number of applications? Okay, and it's just clarification. Applications submitted since January 25, there was eight? And those applications are still under review? Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, you are reading that correctly.
Okay.
Would you like me to expand on that?
Please.
Because I think that has to do a lot with the iterative review process that happens when, when somebody submits an application, ADU application, or any application, as a matter of fact. So initially, an applicant submits an application, right? The city has 30 days to review this. We approve or deny it. If we have any comments, like we're asking, where are you placing, or how far is a water heater next to the structure? How far is your ADU? Can you provide measurements, right? So we provide comments, then they have time to send back comments or respond to the comments that we provide. So that creates also an additional time between the 30 days, and that can become a couple months.
Right. Because I understand that part of it. I guess my question is, the applications that are being submitted, are they under this Pre-approved ADU Program? That's what I'm, I mean, a regular ADU, I get it. It may be back and forth, trying to resolve whatever needs to be resolved. I'm just wondering if the eight applications were under this Pre-approved process?
Yeah, and I think...
And if it is, that's okay. I'm just kind of curious as to now why, the whole purpose of this was really, let's get this going, let's speed it up? And are there just, the people are using these Pre-approved plans and then making just wholesale changes?
So I can jump in here to clarify. You are correct that the eight applications submitted since January of 2025 are specific to the Pre-approved ADU Program. We are tracking them separately. One thing about the program is that while the floor plans, the elevations, and the structural drawings for the purposes of building plan check are provided... drawings for the purposes of building plan check are provided by the city, the applicant still has to provide a site plan custom to their lot. We provide guidance on how to develop that site plan. Obviously, a lot of folks also don't necessarily know what a site plan is. So to Priscilla's point, these are applications where there have been some incomplete items found during review. The 30-day approval process shot clock that Priscilla spoke to earlier is when the project has been found to be no more comments. From that point of when the city says, you have no comments outstanding, we have 30 days to get them issued and approved for construction. So there may be this iterative review process where there are outstanding issues, you don't have information that we need, maybe you mis-drew your site plan, maybe you drew your ADU two feet from property line when you, it needs to be four feet from property line, easements, et cetera. So that's where the iterative review process has come in.
Okay, now I, now I have a better understanding. So how do we speed this process up? I mean, is this just because it's a homeowner, they don't know? Somehow or another, we've got to get this through the process quicker?
I think the idea to speed the process up was to create complimentary educational materials, so that way homeowners and residents know what a site plan is, what the process looks like, what the expectation is. We actually have a site plan worksheet that walks someone through what the expectation is, what the requirements are, to please show easements, to please show connections to the ADU. And I think it's maybe bringing awareness, but I will defer to City Planner to see what she has to say also.
I think also education, right? We can provide education materials, but if you don't know what we're talking about in those education materials, they're not very helpful. So, you know, a best practice would be us holding educational workshops, trying to get into the community to teach folks about this program, and not just providing a site plan worksheet, but a workshop on how to actually draw the site plans, which we did do actually as part of the development of this program. But it really is, I think, that learning curve coupled with capacity that Priscilla has been for the last two years, our only long-range planner working on multiple projects. So that ability to take an extra step and do education and outreach post-project approval and completion has been very challenging.
And I know on, from my experience and the conversations we've had, that our building department is just understaffed, right? And we're trying to get those speeds up. So I know you're actively working on that. I think from my end, as a builder, I've seen that, and it's getting better.
Okay, and please don't take offense. I wasn't trying to put this all on you. It was just...
I think that one of the caveats of having Pre-approved plans are that you're removing the, kind of the architectural duties and the expediting away from the architect, who would know what a site plan is, who would know about easements, property lines, setback requirements, all of that stuff. Whereas people think, oh, I don't have to pay for an architect because they have these Pre-approved plans. But I think it's a, I think it's a, I think it's a really, really great start. And I think that Veronica touched on, you know, doing a workshop would be huge, would really, really be helpful to the public. Just an explanation, hey, what's a site plan? And what's included in it? Be good, very good.
Thank you.
And I appreciate that comment, but in six months, we've had eight applications? It almost seems like that it would be almost more appropriate when we have staff available, that somebody comes in, they want to do, and go through the ADU Program. You go make an appointment, we're going to sit down and spend an hour with you to go through this whole thing so that, that the homeowner that really doesn't understand, they don't know the terminology, that, that that might be more valuable than a workshop that maybe a half a dozen people might show up to. I don't know. But right now, we may not have the staff, you know, bandwidth to sit down with somebody. But what I just don't, what I hate to see is, you know, the back and forth, the back and forth, the back and forth, purely because somebody doesn't understand, or they just don't have the money to give an architect to, you know, to prepare a site plan that meets the city's requirements. Anyway, it was only a question because it was like, wow, I thought this was speeding up the process. So we took one element out, which was the architectural side. I get that, that helps certainly. But now we have the site plan side, which seems to be where we're having a bit of a problem, but...
And that's the most difficult part.
Sure. Anyway, that, that was it. Thank you so much. I appreciate all the effort that you put into putting this together. I think all the information is there. Now it's just a matter of getting the homeowner to understand, you know, how you go about these things. That was all the comments I had. Any other comments, questions? All right, thank you so much. All right, with that, we will move on to future agenda items. Any of the commissioners want to place anything on a future agenda? Commissioner Stevie?
Yeah, I'd like to place on the agenda for the end of summer, maybe the end of August or beginning of September, or whatever our meeting timeframe is in there, an update from the Grand Avenue Subcommittee.
And I would second that. Anything else from anybody? Oral communications? Anybody else come up wanting to speak on anything? Saying none?
None.
Selection of the Chair and Vice Chair? We're going to continue that again until we can get a full commission. So one of these days, we'll have everybody here. Moving on to Planning Commissioners' report. Anybody have anything to report? None? City Planners' report?
Yes, so we will not be holding a July 8 meeting. That meeting will be canceled. We will be having a July 22 meeting, which we anticipate the policy work coming back, the general plan amendment, but that will be publicly noticed accordingly. And we'll also more than likely have an annual progress report on our climate action plan at that July 22 meeting. And then we do anticipate having a very active late summer of August, September, October with private development projects.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything? All right, just meeting Mr. Jordan.